Thank you for being here, all of you who are here in person. Thank you, all of you who are joining us electronically. You are most welcome. We're glad you're here. This is the City Council, a regular meeting of the City Council of Waverly, Iowa. Today is Monday, February 17th. It is 7:01. This meeting is called to order. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Council, your city clerk has provided you with an agenda. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve it?
I'll move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion? This is a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That passed unanimously. Friends, you have in front of you the minutes from our last meeting. That would be February 3rd, a regular meeting. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
I'll move to approve the minutes of the February 3rd, 2025 meeting as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion? I hear none. This will be a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That passed unanimously. Now is the time for public comments on items which are not on the agenda. If you wish to discuss to something that's not on the agenda, rise to the microphone now. I see no one rising, so we will move on to item F. This is the consent calendar. Friends, we have a lot on here tonight, 12 different ones. So can I have a motion to approve them all?
I move approval of the consent calendar as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
We'll give that to Ann. Ann, so, any discussion? I hear none. This is a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That passed unanimously. Moving on to G. We are now in regular business. Could I draw your attention, please, to Resolution 25-13? This is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a second amendment to the agreement for private development by and between the City of Waverly and Movie Guys, a limited liability corporation. Can I have a motion?
I will move approval of Resolution 25-13, a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a second amendment to the agreement for private development by and between the City of Waverly and Movie Guys LLC.
Second.
Thank you. That is on the table. Can we have some discussion?
We could update you on the changes if you'd like, sir, counsel.
I appreciate that.
If you would, please.
Good evening. I'm Connie Tolan, Planning and Development Specialist. I'd like to begin by explaining that the developer had planned to be here this evening, but the winter weather experiencing resulted in some alteration of his air travel plans. So he finds himself not here tonight. So I'll give an overview. The action we have before you is to approve the resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a second amendment to the development agreement we have with Movie Guys LLC for redevelopment of the Palace Theater Building. Some brief background information. The original development agreement was approved in 2019, and it was amended in 2021. The development agreement provides for economic development grants in the form of tax increment financing or TIF tax rebates. The rebates are calculated only on the commercial portion of this project, so it does not include the residential in the upper story. And the rebates are calculated only on the tax increment that's generated by the improvements to the commercial portion of the building. So these are tax revenues that will exist only because of the improvements that are created by this project. Okay? So there are three changes that are included in the amendment. The first one is that extends the minimum improvement completion date to September 1st of 2025. The second is that it reduces the maximum accumulation of the TIF rebates from the original $300,000 down to $263,373.50. That reduction of $36,626.50 reflects the portion of the river wall repairs that are attributable to the theater building. Okay? And third, it adjusts the maximum annual TIF rebate amount from $20,000 a year to $2,500 per year for a maximum of 13 years. And this accommodates the revised completion date and the urban renewal area sunset date in 2040. And the annual rebates will be the lesser of the $20,500 or the actual tax increment that's generated. So we will not rebate more than it's generating. The amendment also reaffirms the requirement that the theater must operate as a cinematic theater open to the public for at least five days of each week in order to qualify for the TIF rebates.
Thank you. Any questions, counsel?
Sounds reasonable to me. Really just moving the date to about the same time the bridge would be open, which makes sense for them, business-wise, to be able to have some more access to their front, because right now the construction kind of blockades the front entrance. They don't get any more parking in front of the bridge, but right now there's just construction there. But, and that we aren't, you know, there's no money coming from the city unless it's generated by their development.
Correct.
So it's not, the city isn't just giving money out. It is rebating what they have generated by the redevelopment.
Right. The original taxes are still there. We still receive that. It's only above and beyond that tax base that would be rebated if they do generate it. The amount is the same. It's merely the timing to allow them to still accommodate that collection of the TIF so that they are able to at least achieve what we agreed to six years ago. Been a while. It's nice to see you getting closer.
And what we're getting is really nice. Several of us saw it tonight, and it's really nice. Nice, big chairs, little electric button, your vines. There's going to be a restaurant, the little table and each chair, so you can eat your dinner or have your beverage while you watch the movie. It's going to be a draw. You know, there isn't another movie theater but Sumner Child City in Waterloo. So this could really help with downtown. This would be a nice thing for us. I envision a September, one day, we get the theater open, that restaurant will be there open, and the bridge open. We'll have a parade.
Get their beach done first.
We got great things coming, Waverly. September 1st, the whole month of September is going to be very exciting.
I'm guessing when they're cruising Bremor Avenue in September, that's going to be a party.
And as well as should be. Okay, where are we? We've got this on the table. It's seconded. Is there any more discussion? Are you ready to vote? This will be a roll call vote. Carla?
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kangas?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Wolf?
That passed unanimously, and that takes us on to item two. A review of the historic preservation, 2024 certified local government annual report, and an annual update to the City Council. Friends, please come forward. Identify yourself, and let's hear what you have to say.
Certainly. Good evening. My name is Bard Mackey, and on the commission representing and support here, we've got Mary Meyer, we've got Karen Lehman, and Addison County, and her fiancee. In your pack for tonight's meeting, you'll find on our certified local government annual report for 2024 on your page 55, I'd just like to take a moment to tell you some of the highlights from our past year and a small glimpse of some of our plans for 2025. This year, we presented two Waverly Historical Preservation Awards to local owners of two properties. Beth Hasler at 421 First Avenue Northeast, up there kitty corner from the courthouse, and Jim and Jana Heinders at 216 Third Street Northwest, which is right across from the front entrance to the old junior high. They both received plaques, and I'll get to that in just a moment. We, Harlington Cemetery was added to the Waverly Historical Register. They received a bronze plaque as well as some neat information, things right outside that brick building down there. We had a well-attended program on May 10th with speakers, awards, presentations, recognitions, and a great guided cemetery tour. We're required to meet at least four times a year in order to fulfill our charter. We meet monthly except for November, so we meet 11 times a year, plus whatever it takes to put on the May program. In 2025, we'll feature and recognize our historical downtown area, and we'd like to partner with the City of Waverly and the Waverly Chamber of Commerce for an event to be held in May on the east side of the river. We're going to recognize different buildings, and our meetings begin next week, in which we'll be planning and getting that all kind of ironed out. Also, this year, we're going to be finishing off signage for the Warburg Historical District. We're sending two of our members, Karen and Mary, to the Preserve Iowa Summit in June in Muscatine, and we'll continue developing the Vanished Landmark Program, and we'll keep selling our 1868 Waverly poster maps at the local events. We'd like to thank you very much for the support you give us. Please refer to your copy of our CLG report for any details of that sort of thing, and we hope to see you in May at the event. Any questions?
What about the Cedar Hill Cemetery? I'd never heard of that until I read the report.
That is, that's, we bump that to like next year, to 2025, 26. Mary, did you have anything you wish to speak to on that?
Are you interested in the history of it? Is that what?
Well, where is it?
Do you know where Brown Lane is when you're driving through Livers Lane? If you make a right turn there, going up the hill, you can't make a left turn. Make a right turn, make the next right turn. There's a little parking area there, and beyond that, there's a little woodsy area. That's where the cemetery is.
Is that pioneers or Native Americans?
Are there any headstones in there?
Pardon?
Are there any headstones in that cemetery?
No, not that I'm aware of. The city bought it in 1860 and 1861. It's actually two small parcels of land. They bought it as a cemetery, and the deed says to be used only as a cemetery. And I have done some research on it recently. It looks like there are probably still 10 or 12 people buried there. There were more. They have, some of them have been moved to Harlington. One that I can't document very well, but I can't find any record that he's been moved. He was a veteran of the War of 1812. So I think it's, you know, maybe something we should call attention to.
Yeah, absolutely.
Certainly we want to preserve it, but it would be nice to, if we could do something there. It's a little nature preserve now. The Boy Scouts, I think, over the years have put signage out there, but that's pretty deteriorated now.
Yeah.
Does that answer your questions?
Yes, thank you.
Sure.
Counsel, any other questions?
What was the name of that?
Cedar Hill.
It's a beautiful little park. It's got trails through there, and the old timers, like my dad, talked about how Native Americans were buried there. That's what the lore was when he was a kid.
I haven't found any evidence.
Yeah. Urban myth could be. It's a beautiful space.
It is. Something needs to be done, and that's on our agenda for 26.
Excellent.
Any further comments, questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. I'd like to move on to item four, which is Resolution 25-14. Now, this is a resolution approving a plat of survey for parcel three. You guys are so good at this. Okay, we'll go back and take three, if that makes you happy. Resolution 25-07. Now, this one is a resolution setting a public hearing for Cedar River Park lease agreement between the City of Waverly and the Waverly Softball Association for March 3, 2025. Can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve Resolution 25-07, a resolution setting a public hearing for March 3, 2025, at 7 o'clock PM in the City Council chambers at City Hall, as a date, time, and place for a public hearing on a Cedar River Park lease agreement between the City of Waverly and the Waverly Softball Association.
Second. All righty. Any discussion?
This is just for setting a public hearing.
All right. Normally, we hadn't done this in the past, but we talked to attorneys. There's a section that if you have a lease at three years or more, or three consecutive years to the same entity, you must hold a public hearing. So you'll see a lot more of these coming forward as we go through flood lasts, things like this. Anything with a lease is going to drive this, so.
You appear ready to vote. Shall we have a public hearing? Let's have a roll call vote.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kangas?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes. That's unanimous and passed. Now we can move on to item four. Resolution 25-14, a resolution approving a plat of survey for parcel 20 and parcel YY located at 2419 East Bremer Avenue, Waverly, Iowa. Can I have a motion?
I'll move approval of Resolution 25-14, a resolution approving a plat of survey for parcel XX and parcel YY located at 2419 East Bremer Avenue, Waverly, Iowa, for Valerie Holm to convey parcel XX to Kroll Incorporated to expand their driveway, and parcel YY to create a bigger parcel for Teed Nursery to expand their business.
Second. Excellent. Any discussion?
Kroll already has a driveway there, right?
Yeah, if you look at the map, there's just a little bit of a corner that's going to their driveway.
Right. But there is currently a driveway there.
Currently a driveway, and it is kind of...
Cutting off the corner of that triangle.
Yeah. Apparently, they've been driving across this property for some time, but now they want to pave it.
Makes sense.
Make it like proper width.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? I appreciate those, the math teacher that caught my slip up. Too many years studying Latin.
Looks like Roman numerals to you?
Yes, it did. Okay. No more discussion? You ready to vote? This will be a roll call vote. Carla?
Jones?
Yes.
Kangas?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
That passed unanimously, taking us to number five. Resolution 25-15, a resolution accepting the Waverly Municipal Golf Course Hole Number Two Pond Aligning and Reshaping Project as complete and approving final payment. So let's start the way of motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 25-15, a resolution accepting the Waverly Municipal Golf Course Hole Number Two Pond Aligning Reshaping Project as complete and approving final payment to Chadheim Escavating and Trucking for $27,268.
Second.
Thank you. I think James has proposed to amend.
Yeah, I'd like to reduce that amount by $1,100. That's the cost of the seeding, and I certainly want to make sure we have grass on this, since we paid to have it seeded correctly in the fall. The timing of it makes us wonder, will it come up or not? So if you could change your motion to $27,268 less, $1,100 for seeding, we want to hold that as retention so that we make sure it does come up and don't have to go back and do it again later.
Because are they going to be doing the seeding? Or...
They did already, but we'll see if it comes up. That time of year is always tricky. You never know if it's going to quite take, and so if it comes up in spring, we'll release some drainage. If it doesn't, we'll want to make sure it's reseeded somehow.
Will you make that amendment?
Yes, I'll make that amendment.
Julie, will you use?
Yes.
Friendly second? Okay. We have an amended Resolution 25-15. Any more discussion?
How'd it turn out?
Just back. It's what they wanted. We're going to see, hopefully it'll hold water. Snow melts, but we checked the clay, the depth. Everything looks like it should work, so.
Okay.
So assuming the grass comes up as they installed it, then they'll get their money for services rendered, but it's just we're holding on to it until the grass actually comes up.
Just to make sure, because it's a tough time of year.
Right. So if it doesn't come up, then we'll use that funds presumably to do it ourselves, or give them the opportunity to make it right.
Reseed it, correct.
And is there some sort of a warranty for it to not leak?
That's a tough one. I'll have to look into that. I don't know if there's a warranty or not. There's a little different project for that, but I'll look into that for you.
Anything else? This is a roll call vote. Carla?
Kangas?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
That passed unanimously, which brings us to item six, which is Resolution 25-16, a resolution setting bid letting date and setting a public hearing to review the plan, specifications, and form of contract and estimated cost for the Bituminous Seal Coat Program of 2025. May I have a motion?
I'll move to approve Resolution 25-16, a resolution setting bid letting date for March 11, 2025, and setting April 7, 2025, at 7 o'clock PM at City Hall, as a date, time, and place for a public hearing to review the plans, specifications, and form of contract and estimated cost of the Bituminous Seal Coat Program 2025 project.
Second.
Any discussion?
Looks like this is mainly down in the sort of southwest, just near the river. But is the yellow section on the map also to be done, or just the blue streets?
Correct. The yellow section is as well. That's A Street by the dog park, by the sewer pump, and then all the way around 11th and 20th.
Crestwood and...
Right.
Now, does the yellow piece have a different material storage site? I see you've got the blue, and there's a little diamond where the material storage is. Are they going to use the same location for the yellow stuff as well?
Typically, we use the same location, because they haul in, it all well in advance.
Okay.
Okay. Shall we hold a public hearing? Let's find out. This is a roll call vote. Carla?
Myers?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kangas?
Yes.
That passed unanimously, taking us to item seven, which is Resolution 25-17. This is a resolution approving a proposal from Watersmith Engineering for engineering the replacement of East Gate Lift Station. Let's have a motion to bring it up?
I'll move approval of Resolution 25-17, a resolution approving a proposal from Watersmith Engineering of Muscatine, Iowa, for engineering the replacement of East Gate Lift Station for $92,500.
Second. We're on the table. Any discussion?
So why did this engineering firm be selected?
Justin?
He was, this firm was well-recommended from Bolton &amp; Mink. We did vet him. They do a lot of work in Cedar Rapids, Muscatine. A lot of the projects they do are very similar to what we're looking at. It's not a large lift station, and he was very good to work with on some of the ideas of how to make this a little more cost-effective and pleasing to the eye, I guess, as well.
It says that the source of funding is going to be bond proceeds. Which bond proceeds are those?
They're from prior year bond.
Prior year, water revenue bonds.
Reduction in costs that we were able to realize. We'll do a reallocation resolution next month to reallocate to these type of items. There's a couple more that we'll have that'll have this. So instead of paying it back and borrowing again, we're going to reallocate to the sewer side versus the water side, and that's what we'll pay for this.
Okay.
So like the leftover money from the water tower?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
So it's water bonds or sewer bonds or...
It is part of the prior bond that is being paid for with water fees.
Okay.
So it was a GO bond paid back with water fees for the water percentage of the projects.
Any more discussion? Friends, this will be a roll call vote.
Rothie?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kangas?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
That passed unanimously. Item eight, which is Resolution 25-18, a resolution approving a lease agreement to cut and bail grass at the Waverly Municipal Airport in 2025. Can I have a motion?
Move to approve Resolution 25-18, a resolution approving a lease agreement between the City of Waverly and Luke Schultz of Tripola, Iowa, to cut and bail grass at the Waverly Municipal Airport for $4,850 for 2025.
Second. Excellent. Any discussion or questions?
Have we confirmed insurance?
Yes, we have.
Excellent.
Received last week.
Okay.
Well, you appear ready to vote already. Carla?
Wolf?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kangas?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
That passed unanimously. Resolution 25-19, a resolution approving scope of work for the Water Pollution Control Facility, Sludge Storage Tank Maintenance, and Down Payment to Great Plains Structures LLC. Can I have a motion? Anyone?
I'll move approval of Resolution 25-19, a resolution approving scope of work for the Water Pollution Control Facility, WPCF, excuse me, Sludge Storage Tank Maintenance, and 10% down payment, equaling $11,877.10 to Great Plains Structures LLC of Vatney Heights, Minnesota, with total project cost of $118,771.
Second. We're on the table. Any discussion, questions?
I don't know how to pronounce the name of that town. That's why I didn't want to say it, but I still don't know if I did it right, but...
Can we get some context as to why we're doing, why we're fixing up a new structure, a new water treatment plant?
This is the old sludge storage tank.
Okay.
Out at the WPC. They're supposed to be maintained or lined every roughly from 15 years or so. This one, I think it was built in the 90s or possibly a little earlier than that. Never been maintained. We've had a couple leaks on it prior. Small ones, just drips. They were able to repair it whenever we drain them down and seal up, but this is actually replacing some panels that have eroded a little bit. The timeliness is the biggest factor in this, because there's such a long lead time, you know, 20 to 26 week lead time, and the tanks must be cleaned, and we got to time And the tanks must be cleaned, and we got to time it with our sludge hauling. So if we do a spring haul, we can have them empty, coincide the work for July, August timeframe before we fill them back up for the fall. If we wait till the fall and do this, we could risk not being able to complete the work in the winter because of cold weather. So if we get hauled out in November, December, and then all of a sudden we get a cold winter, we're pretty much stuck with it until the next year.
I recall this being on Grant's radar when we had our tour of the facility, so.
You don't want to run out of storage for this.
And you don't want to leak.
No.
No.
Either.
Neither appealing.
Any more discussion or questions? You appear ready to vote. Carla?
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkhouse?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Cangis?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
That passed unanimously. Item 10, we're going to draw off the agenda for tonight.
I'd like to remove it. We're still getting references cleared, et cetera. We thought we'd have it done by now, but it may take another week or so for response. Everybody's kind of busy with that whole budget thing. I heard about it. And so we're going to pull it, get it back early March, and knock it down then. So appreciate it.
That takes us to number 11, which is Resolution 2521, a resolution fixing date for a meeting on the proposition of the issuance of not to exceed $600,000 general obligation bonds of the city of Waverly, state of Iowa, for general corporate purposes and providing for publication of notice thereof. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll move approval of Resolution 25-21, a resolution fixing date for a meeting on the proposition of the issuance of not to exceed $600,000 general obligation bonds of the city of Waverly, state of Iowa, for general corporate purposes and providing for publication of notice thereof and setting March 3, 2025 at 7:00 PM in the city council chambers at City Hall as the date, time, and place for a public hearing.
Second. Any discussion or questions?
What does it mean fixing, fixing date for a meeting? Who's meeting?
Your meeting.
Our meeting?
Basically fixing a data hearing.
Public hearing.
Public hearing for this.
So it's just a different way of setting a public hearing.
Why we pay those people what we do in corporate time in Des Moines there.
Okay.
This is for the golf course equipment in the parking lot at headquarters. It's considered general corporate, not essential corporate. Excellent, will be essential corporate.
I was going to ask the difference between general corporate and central corporate.
So central corporate, streets, bridges, things like that. Existing parks are essential? New parks are general? Don't ask me why. It's a state legislature thing. So we have different legislatures. So if you have an existing park, you can borrow a central corporate. You can borrow more than what you want to borrow. All that you can do. Brand new park, you're limited by the general corporate purpose, the $934,570 that we can't get to anyway. That's the limit. All the fun stuff and the amenities have the limit. General corporate purpose. That's a good way to explain it. Things like streets and bridges, all the things that people take for granted, those you can borrow as much as you'd like to. They're a central corporate purpose. The central corporate purpose side will be the existing park, parking lot, boat dock, and it'll be for the water building next to us, which is again, an existing building, dilapidated building that falls into the code as well that you can use these for. So it's just different categories based on what they are, straight out of the AL code. The attorneys break it up for us and give us the not to exceeds, which is more than we'll actually bond for. But if you were to find something out the next month or two before we issue that it was a little more than you anticipated, it gives you the leeway to bond accordingly so you're not short. So we will not do the not to exceed unless something severe happens, but it just gives us that leeway to do it. So this is the general obligation bonds for general corporate purpose. Essential will be the next item.
So the general is, you said, the parking lots?
The park headquarters.
The park.
And the golf course equipment.
Okay.
Because we had a referendum for the golf course. You have to have a referendum for golf course maintenance building. Referendum for, if you hit that threshold, it's a referendum.
Golf courses aren't considered essential.
They are not.
Right.
And neither are pools and parks and all kinds of things like that. New ones. Existing ones, parks are. Yeah. It's a whole chunk of this code you should read sometime.
And what did you say the limit was on this one?
$600,000 is what we're doing, but the total per item would be $934,570. It was $700,000 a year ago, and they've upped that in House File 718. Probably the only good thing that came out of that file.
Right.
That's when it all changed, was when that was approved two years ago.
Any other discussion or questions? Carla, let's have a vote.
Jones?
Yes.
Cangis?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkhouse?
Yes.
That passed unanimously. Resolution 25-22, a resolution fixing date for a meeting on the proposition of the issuance of not to exceed $700,000 general obligation bonds of the city of Waverly, state of Iowa, for essential corporate purposes and providing for publication of notice thereof. Can I have a motion?
I'll move approval of Resolution 25-22, a resolution fixing date for a meeting on the proposition of the issuance of not to exceed $700,000 general obligation bonds of the city of Waverly, state of Iowa, for essential corporate purposes, ECP, and providing for publication of notice thereof and setting March 3, 2025 at 7:00 PM in the city council chambers at City Hall as the date, time, and place for a public hearing.
Second. It's on the table. Any discussion?
So the essential corporate purposes is the water building and the boat dock parking lot?
Correct. Because that's an existing park.
One of the rates was 9%, and the other rate wasn't listed, did I see?
9%? I don't know that there would be a rate. There shouldn't be a rate in there.
No?
Assuming that the rate is set when it goes out for.
Yeah, we haven't sold the bonds yet, but. Yeah, if you can locate where that's at, I'd love to see that actually because that's intriguing. That was on the last one.
Yeah.
Cut it up there. I ain't paying 9%.
Yeah.
9%.
I didn't see that.
I could be mistaken.
Page four, the first full paragraph.
Not to exceed?
Not to exceed nine. Is that what you were thinking?
Oh, not to exceed. Okay.
Yeah, that should not be in there. Thank you for catching that. I've read that multiple times and I completely missed it, so.
Is that on the?
We will strike that.
It's on the GCP.
Page four.
Oh, okay.
Bearing interest rate, bearing interest rate not to exceed 9%.
Per annum. Yeah, let's double check the other, make sure it's not there.
I don't think I saw it.
Yeah, no, it's not the other.
So yeah, we'll make sure they remove that.
Okay, I'm going to bring you back to Resolution 2522. And any more discussion or questions? Are you ready to vote?
If you would pause this one second, ma'am. I do think that's supposed to be in there. Hang on one second.
Okay.
The law has changed, like I said, House File 718. It made everything very weird now. I think you do have to list what the expected impact would be to the properties based on that. We'll double check with bond counsel, but the next one does have one at $7.05.
Second one has some value for.
So I think there is something in there that will need to be done as far as what it will cost. And again, it's a change in the House file that it must be done that way. But we will double check with bond counsel to make sure that is correct. If not, it'll be removed or it'll be changed accordingly.
Okay. With that caveat, are you ready to vote? Many of you still have that perplexed look on your face. Are we okay?
I just still wish they called a public hearing and not a meeting. I get thrown when they're changing terms in the middle of the.
So do we vote contingent on?
If you would, please, yes.
Adjusted according to what the attorney recommends.
Yep.
Okay. Let's see if you want to have a meeting. This is 2522. Carla?
Cangis?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkhouse?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
We'll be having a meeting. That was passed unanimously. That takes us to item 13, Resolution 2523, a resolution approving an extension to the Bremer County Fair lease agreement to terminate on April 1, 2025. Can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve Resolution 25-23, a resolution approving an extension to the Bremer County Fair lease agreement to terminate on April 1, 2025.
Second. Okay. Discussion.
So this lease was going to terminate on February 28, I assume?
Actually terminated at the end of October. And we had discussions at the time that the fair may have commitments made. So we're trying to confirm that to get to this point. And they did confirm that they have commitments to use the buildings till later, without having to swap out insurance, et cetera. We thought the simplest, easiest way, because we have no use for them at this point in time till a little later this year, would be to extend it to April 1, which is after their last committed event. And that way they can get it, hold it, be done, moved out, completely finished. So they're certainly going to the east side of the city for the county fair this late summer. This is just a couple items they had still needing the buildings on. So it seemed like the simplest, easiest way to fix it.
So James, a question for, so we'll take over, I guess, management of those buildings? And just thinking about Heritage Days in July, will they be able to use the, like the Durashty Building and the Forage Building?
I don't know.
Okay.
That's something we're going to figure out. I don't want to get into the rental business of buildings like that. We have a tough enough time keeping up with the staff. We have as limited as we are the buildings we do have for rentals. Once you start that, where do you stop? And how do you rent to somebody and not somebody else?
Sure.
So I don't know what that's going to look like. At some point, we're going to have to demolish these buildings. We'll see where that falls into the whole scheme of it, but I don't know. We're going to have to have a discussion with Heritage Days anyway. Look at the park layout, how that's going to work, what it looks like now with the pool staying where it is versus going to the west side that it was going to. And we're getting that redrawn by MSA as you mentioned last meeting. So we'll probably have that discussion all the way around. Because whether or not we can keep the building, as we talked about, since there is a similar building being built at the fairgrounds, all that's going to have to be discussed. But as of now, I don't have that answer, unfortunately.
And I've suggested to them, I think, we, the Heritage Days Committee needs to have a conversation with the fair board too and see what. And I don't know that they have a plan yet for renting out that, their new building out at the new site, so. I'll talk to them. It might be helpful to sit down with them and figure it out.
Yep, it's definitely in our plans because as I said, we're going to redraw that park. We want to make sure that the things that were changing are going to fit their needs as well and give them a chance to kind of reidentify what that should look like for the celebration.
Any more discussion? Carla?
Myers?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkhouse?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Cangis?
Yes.
That passed unanimously, taking us to item 14. This is the second reading of Ordinance 1160, an ordinance amending the sewer rates, charges, and minimum rates for fiscal year '25 and '26, and '26, '27, and setting a public hearing. Can I have a motion? Anyone?
I'll move to approve the second reading of Ordinance 1160, an ordinance amending the sewer rates, charges, and minimum rates for fiscal years 2025 to 2026, and 2026 to 2027, and set March 3, 2025 at 7:00 PM in the council chambers at City Hall as the date, time, and place for a public hearing. Second.
Thank you. So any discussion? We're going to be having a lot of public hearings and meetings.
Yeah, the third's going to be a busy, busy weekend.
Okay. No discussion?
I just want to say, I mean, I think all of you have probably been contacted by people who were concerned about increasing sewer and water rates. I don't think we need to do this. I actually want to do it tonight rather than on the 3rd. But there, at the last meeting, we had a fairly extensive discussion about why that would be necessary because of the increased costs that we have that we need to cover by increasing the rates. It may be a good idea at some point that we have that, a brief discussion again of what some of those costs entail so that people understand that we're not just doing this because we're putting money away in a savings account somewhere, but these are things that we need to do to be able to keep our sewer and water systems operating well. So is that something we can maybe, maybe Justin can take about three minutes here tonight and just kind of give a very brief overview of what costs are going up and why we're going to need to have these increases?
Well, to start off, you know, when they started the WPC 2020 improvement project, it was slated to be an eight or nine million dollar project. So in that day, that's what they were designed for. That's what they were planning for. A lot of these increases that were done previously were set at those rates. Well, when time came, the project to date is 14.5 million. So a rather large increase, and we're trying to make up for some of those increases. Some of the costs, once COVID hit, a lot of the costs of all our steel products, chemicals, UV bulbs, any other supplies along those lines, sludge hauling doubled with the new plant. So we went from $35,000 to over $70,000 per year. Some other costs were electricity. Those have gone up every year. We're up about $70,000 from when that originally started. Chemicals that go into the plant, they're double. And just everything compounds out there, and it's, we're just trying to catch up. Luckily, you know, we've got a new facility out there. Shouldn't need a lot of repairs, just general maintenance over the years. And Grant's been really good about getting new parts and new pumps and everything like that that we need to keep the other, I mean, 10 lift stations running. So we're looking good for the future there. But now we're just working on a few of the other items like we've approved tonight for the East Gate Lift Station. Some areas that have been neglected for a few years.
And the choices, you can have a 30% or 40% increase in one year.
Right.
And that's what some cities have chosen to do. We didn't think that was a good idea, not knowing the economy's going to be, what people's ability to take that increase. But there are cities not far from here that recently did a 30% increase or more. The gradual increase over time was a little more efficient, easier to take. That's what, I mean, think about trying to build in four and a half more million in a year with that increase to try and fund the debt. That's substantial. And so I'd rather see two or three versus 30 at once. And that's what it's kind of been going forward. Nothing gets cheaper year to year. The budget's made up. Correct me if I'm wrong.[1559.05] The budget's made up, and correct me if I'm wrong, you have staff to do the work to fix the sewer lines, to do and run the plant. You have materials, you have the debt to pay for some of this, plus other projects we've done ten years ago that are still being paid off. And you have equipment that has to be done to run it, whether it's a jet machine to make sure the lines are clear. That stuff is not cheap. What's the cost of a jet machine, for example?
Four-fifty, I think it was.
Four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, a shy half a million for a jet machine. You have to have that, in a sense, or you're gonna have problems, especially in a city of our size. So, and that thing's used constantly. So that's, that's part of the issue when people think about this. I know it's a bit of an increase. They don't go up every single year. That's why we look at them every other year. We try to look at the budget. You also have to maintain a certain amount of fund for if you want your bonds rated, otherwise your interest's gonna go through the roof. Moody's isn't happy with where your fund balances, and it's never enough for them. So all that has to be factored in. Justin does a great job of looking at it every single year, knowing what we have to have, what is the money available, does it fit or not? If it fits, we don't raise it. If it doesn't, we try to go as low as we can till it just does. So we're not socking money away just to hold on to it. Maybe other places do that, but we don't do that. It's necessary for what we're doing the next year or two, when the projects are on the table. And that's how it's done, and it's the same way for each of these items.
Thank you. I appreciate the discussion.
Yes, sir.
People have to understand that, just like your costs at home, our costs increase. And I wish that we did not have to increase some of these rates, and I know it's a problem for some people, but unfortunately, that's just a fact of life, and I appreciate the fact that we're trying to keep those rates as low as possible and the increases as low as possible, so they don't have such huge impact on people. So I appreciate the discussion. Thank you for the explanation.
And just another point, there are studies out there that we look at from cities all across the state. We do compare all the time to where we sit. And we are certainly not the highest, we're not the lowest, we're in that broad middle range where everyone else sits as well. It's just a matter of trying to maintain this equipment so that, you know, the sewer works, your water's clean, your garbage is hauled away. All that stuff does take money, unfortunately, and it certainly does not get cheaper. The other, the other side about this that, and people think, and they're looking at their own water bill, their own sewer bill and stuff, but these are probably the fairest tax rates in town in the sense that everybody pays it. Even the, even the properties that don't pay property tax pay for these fees. So this is something that is distributed much more broadly across the community. Yes, it's gonna hit everybody's budget, but it does take into account some of these institutions that are, that don't pay the property taxes that we don't run the city out of.
Well, it's totally use-based, so.
Yeah, and there are always places you can cut corners or put off repairs, but this is the stuff that makes your toilet flush down, not up. So this is not where we should be cutting anything. Yep, it's inflation. Okay, any more discussion? Carla, let's have a vote.
Rothie?
Yes.
Excuse me. Wolf?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kengas?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
That passed unanimously, taking us to item fifteen. This is the second reading of ordinance one-one-six-one, an ordinance amending the water rates, charges, and minimum rates for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-six, twenty-seven, and setting a public hearing. Can I have a motion?
I will move approval of the second reading of ordinance eleven-sixty-one, an ordinance amending the water rates, charges, and minimum rates for fiscal years twenty-two-five through twenty-two-six, and twenty-two-six through twenty-two-seven, and set March third, twenty-two-five, at seven P.M. in the council chambers at City Hall as the date, time, and place for a public hearing.
Second. Any discussion?
It's a similar situation. And I do think that, just to point out another spot, even going back, like I said, Justin's done the work. I wanna make sure people are aware of it. So typical household, six hundred cubic feet. It's out there, it's public, we have it in our document. The increase will be another two dollars and forty cents per month, another two dollars and fifty cents for sewer. For water, it's about, I believe it's ninety cents per month is what we're talking about in the increase for three percent. And that's on a six hundred cubic feet of water per month, ninety cents for each of the increases. So just for some perspective, that's the amount of money we're talking about.
You ready to vote? Carla?
Wolf?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kengas?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
That passed unanimously, number sixteen. This is the second reading of ordinance one-one-six-two, an ordinance amending the solid waste rates, charges, and base rate for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-six, twenty-seven, and setting a public hearing. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the second reading of ordinance one-one-six-two, an ordinance amending the solid waste rates, charges, and base rate for fiscal years twenty-two-five to twenty-two-six, and twenty-two-six to twenty-two-seven, and set March third, twenty-two-five, at seven P.M. in the council chambers at City Hall as the date, time, and place for a public hearing. Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Carla, whoops.
I was gonna say, I'm not gonna say too much. I know last time I voted against this because I still think that seventy-five percent, that seventy cents, which is a twenty percent increase, is a bit high. I acknowledge need, need to increase those costs, but I'm just, I voted against it because I thought that seventy-five cents was, was too, that twenty percent was too high, but.
Anything else? Carla?
Bergen?
No.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kengas?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
That passed six to one. We're on item seventeen. Where City Administrator James Brunner will review the city's annual comprehensive financial report. Oh, boy.
Yeah. So Chad from Williams Company owes me a lot, because I didn't make him drive nine hours round trip for this, hopefully no more than ten or fifteen minutes. I'm gonna walk you through the same audit, same way he would have walked us through it. And you can do with it what you would like. So, go ahead and get your audits out. It's a nice beige color. We get to pick that, you know. That was all our doing, so.
Okay.
First thing you'll see when you open it up is the transmittal letter. And the thing is, I'll take credit for it, although I didn't do hardly any of this. Valerie puts most of this together with help of staff. This entire document is done by auditors, by Valerie, by other staff, et cetera. It's a significant amount of time and effort. I know that people like to take a page out of this and say, "Look at this." Well, it's a hundred and fifty-one pages. I don't think one of them's gonna tell you the full story, so. You really have to see this in its whole, and we'll try and get you through that as we go forward. So a transmittal letter. It kinda walks you through the basics of, you know, who are we as a city of Waverly? What do we have going on from an economic development standpoint, the economy, our awards and acknowledgements? We get an award for our audit every year. Got it again for last year's audit, that's in here. So it's very good reading. This and the MDA, which we'll get to, kinda tell the story of what our audit is. And then the rest of it kind of backs it down with what that story says. So that's your first three pages, as you kinda look through it. Anybody's gonna go ahead and read it at some point in time. You don't have to now, but it's, it's very, very nice, I assure you. Page six, there's our award in the paper. We get a nice little button, put on a plaque, one more year. I don't know how long we've been getting this, but it's been decades. We've gotten this every year for our audits, as you go forward, so. That is on page six. Page eight is one of the big ones. So when you have an audit, the highest rating you can get on it is what's called a clean opinion. And if you look at the second paragraph, where it starts out, "Our opinion, based on our audit and reports to the other auditors," which would be for utilities and hospital, "financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material aspects." That is a clean opinion, that's what we strive for, that's the language you wanna see. So I'm glad they were able to issue that. The rest of it is their independent auditor's report kinda outlining what they do, what they've done, what their responsibility was, anything that they saw that was odd. Okay. Now, page twelve through twenty is what I said earlier, it's a management discussion analysis, MDA. It gets in a little more in-depth, the financial part of what goes on in the city. It starts to cover your government-wide financial statements, it gets into our revenue and our expenses, our different funds, how they're operating. Again, if you're gonna read a couple pieces of this, transmittal letter, MDA, those are gonna give you an idea of what the city has going on. I think Valerie prepares a lot of this, and it's very well done. So it kinda helps you see also that, you know, we're broken into different buckets and categories, from public safety to public works to culture and recreation. They're just not categories you see usually, when we're talking about budgets, it's not parks and rec, et cetera. They're in broader categories, and that's how the state views this, and that's why it's done in this manner. Okay. So page twenty-one, and actually pages twenty-two, twenty-three, these are all accrual forms of accounting. And we operate on a cash basis normally. And a cash basis would be anything that happens and billed out or received prior to June thirty, we count that. If it's July first, we don't necessarily count that because it didn't happen at the end of that fiscal year, June thirty. That's your cash basis. Most governments use it, the federal government even uses it, whatever they're doing, it's probably some form of that now, I guess. State government uses that same thing. To receive the broader award for the audit, we also do an accrual. So a good example of accrual is if you get billed in July or June for your heat, and it's due in July, you would count that July payment back into the year. It was accrued back in because it's part of what happened in that year, it just didn't land in that year. That's the accrual basis. So a lot of times when you see information that's a little bit different from one or the other, it's because of the accruals that you're seeing. So you don't really make a lot of statements off of this, there's not a lot of decisions you can make, but it does give you the net position, and the statement have activities, so your balance sheet and your income statement in the accrual format for that. Okay, if you, stop me anytime if you wanna talk a little further about any of this, but those are your accruals. Twenty-four and twenty-five is your balance sheet, and these are for the major funds. So your general fund, your benefits, debt, your major funds. Later on in the audit, you get to those small funds, road use tax, any of the capital projects we have. They audit all those individually separately as well. Those are your non-major funds, and we'll get to that also, but these are your major funds. So you have your balance sheet, and you also have your governmental funds or year income statement on page twenty-seven, twenty-eight. So a lot of what we dealt with last year was general fund. And our general fund is up this year. The, it performed much better than we had anticipated, thankfully. About six hundred thousand dollars better than we anticipated. So that's why when we budget, we can only go with what we know of. The actuals that come in are sometimes a lot better than was anticipated. And the revenues are higher, the expenses are lower. We can't always factor all that in, but we are in a good place in a sense. Normally, we would talk about how many days that is. The unassigned general fund would be about forty-seven days. We sure liked it to be a lot higher. It's definitely down even from the prior year. Total general fund is a hundred and three. That's right, the target. We'd wanna be if that was all unassigned. Again, we were building that back. It cycles like everything else does in government. We were much higher years back, we were a bit lower. So now we're coming back out of this, hopefully, with the changes we made a year ago that affected the final part of fiscal twenty-four, and we're already seeing it in fiscal twenty-five. So again, it did pay dividend. We are coming back on what we had to do, so.
And James, can you explain again with the forty-seven and one oh-three? Those, that's how many days we have to run the government?
Yes, ma'am.
And what was the difference between the two?
One is completely unassigned, which is just nobody else's money but us. The other would be library inventory prepaid, all these other things that are the true general fund in itself. So when we budget, we look at the actual general fund as a whole. And when we audit, we break it out into different categories. There was a Gatsby done five, seven years ago, ten years ago, that made us do that. So we have to break it out separate into different categories, what it does entail. So that's what page twenty-seven, twenty-eight, you can check. Page thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-six, these are all the same documents, but for utilities, just the things we were talking about, water, sewer, solid waste, your utilities, your enterprise funds. So it's the same information, just done separately for those. They're called proprietary funds. We also call them enterprise funds. But the audit calls them proprietary funds. Okay. Now we'll jump to page thirty-nine. This is where the sleeping starts, when you start reading. This stuff is, it's a lot of information, but it's not real tasty. For the next forty-four pages, you're gonna find the notes to the financial statements. You get into OPEB, which is Other Post-Employment Benefits. That is a huge part of the audit. Years ago, they made it start accounting for if the city shut down tomorrow, what would we owe everybody that works here? OPEB, Other Post-Employment Benefits. They put another probably thirty, forty pages into the audit. I don't think it did much else for that. Nobody really makes decisions off of it. It's just something that you see in private business, so they try to push it onto public business. And that's a lot of what Gatsby's been doing, is trying to move things that private corporations do into public as well, even though we're not built the same. And that's what makes it difficult to cross that over at times. And so what you see for the next forty-four pages are all these different notes and summaries. I think it's number seven is our assets. Your debt is in here. Let me break it down a little cleaner. Your receivables, everything you ever wanted to know sits right in here. So again, forty pages of fun. Feel free to read up on that all you'd like. Pension funds, all that kinda stuff, that's where OPEB starts.
And is Gatsby a government entity, or are they?
Government Accounting Standard Board. So, yeah, they sit and outline, I think they ever treat every year and think, what is the weirdest thing that these guys look at and try and look for? And they're very good at it, because every time you turn around, here's some more stuff that we don't really understand.
It's not a government entity, though.
No.
It's a trade association.
Oh, okay.
Of.
But they're given the authority to.
As far as the audit world is concerned.
If you want, if you want your audit to be accepted according to standard practices, then you gotta follow what they say you have to do. Otherwise, the audit's not going to be acceptable.
So they've been given that authority to
Sure.
tell government bodies what to do.
CPAs.
Okay.
So.
We like to just give authority. It's awesome. Just give it to them.
You know, those accounts are power-hungry.
That's what I hear. So, yeah, we'll cut past all that. I don't really wanna get into all that. That's a nuts and bolts, a lot of parts and pieces. Let's jump to page, ah, where do we wanna go? Oh, eighty-four-six, something like that. That's nothing you really wanna play with. OPEB liability, this is the Other Post-Employment Benefits. That's what you're seeing through the early nineties in here, ninety-seven is probably the next section you're gonna wanna look at. I assume you're all gonna read this tonight. Those are the non-major funds, the little funds. So road use tax, sales tax increment, we have one more payment on that last bond. The sidewalk program, all our capital programs are all audited and put in here, the major ones that have any kind of transactions. Those are non-major funds, they're called. Some of them are closed out. You see there's zero, there was still funding in it. That's where you find the ball diamond, you find capital group fund. All those things are in here. And that goes to page one-twelve. Page one-thirteen, now you get into the ten-year statistical section. Again, a lot of good information comes out of this, historical comparisons. You can take and miss what you'd like, but it goes to page one-hundred-and-forty-three. And again, it's ten years of where we've been, what we've done, how things are going. Anywhere from fund balances to changes in net position. You get your tax revenues for the last ten years, you get your property tax levies and collections, your largest taxpayers, your largest employers. There's just a lot of good statistical information in here that if you really wanted to know a little bit about the cross-section, we're even gonna give it to you. So I always do enjoy the statistical section. And a good thing about the audit, the way we do it, this looks the same for every city in the country. You blow up a city fifty times our size, it's gonna look the same. The number's gonna be a little bigger. But it's built the same way, same capacity, same look. Counties are the same thing. That's why I like the way this is done.
So I'm seeing something on page one-nineteen, the cable TV franchise tax.
Oh, I know that page well.
Which like went, it kinda peaked in twenty-twenty and has been going down since then. So what changed in twenty-twenty to cause that to kinda reverse direction?
You guys must be meeting more often? No, I'm just kidding. I have no idea. I.
I just, I mean, it's.
We'd have to look back, and that is a few thousand dollars a year, as we're looking back.
I mean, it kinda, in twenty-fifteen, it was like fifty thousand, fifty-one thousand, then suddenly it went up to sixty-one thousand, ninety-four, one oh-two, and then has been like drifting back down, so.
Yeah, I'd have to look at that. I don't follow the.
I'm just kinda curious.
Cable TV franchise tax.
When I see trends, makes me like curious.
Don't you think it's because of online?
It probably is a bit of that, yeah, when you start looking at the online sales and that.
I'm just surprised it started going up in twenty-nineteen already. So, I mean, it, that was pre-COVID when it started to peak.
Well, that was a good year for cable TV franchise tax, apparently.
Yeah.
I'll dig into that all that I can.
Yeah.
And we'll see what that looks like, and I'll try and.
But most of these things, as you would expect, go up over time.
Sure.
So when you see something going down, it kinda attracts attention.
And we will dig into that.
So I anticipate there'll be a stampede of citizens wanting to get their hands on this to review at home.
Everywhere.
So.
It says available online?
Sure, somewhere. Val, we put this out there online. Of course we do.
Okay.
It is interesting that the number of arrests made has dropped despite the fact that we have a third more people living in town.
We are a kinder, kindler, gentler force here.
Apparently, yeah.
What page is that on?
Tell me, what are you doing? Is that?
And, and what page is that on?
That's on page one-forty-one.
Ah, we should look.
I like looking at the socio, sort of, you know, psychosocial statistics about Waverly. But that is interesting. I mean, I'm a.
We brought in better people. They don't.
Maybe. Or maybe they're more discerning about.
It could be. Maybe they're fearful.
Any theories about that, Chief?
Now that I wanna give a public theory right now.
Okay. I don't want you to give away your.
What, trade secrets?
Secrets, but I just think that's interesting, you know?
All right, anything else? Can we move on? We're getting to the fun part.
Twice.
Findings.
There's reference to discreetly presented component units in both the hospital.
Where's that?
Well, one is on page thirty-nine, last, just above the last paragraph. What does discreetly presented mean? And why?
Oh, good order here.
Where is that?
Page thirty-nine?
Oh, discreetly.
It's a hundred and forty years ago.
I think that means they're not presenting as part of this report.
They have their own separate audit, so we have to pull from what their auditors say, not having to audit first.
Okay. Yeah, it's on page, it's on page eight as well. Okay, so it means they're doing their own thing.
They are. And so this is built on their audit, utilities audit, separate firms, and then our own actual firm that you did the audit to, so. All right, talk online about statistical section, that's exciting stuff. It's a good page. Forty-five, forty-six, it's all about internal controls, and you have a letter from the auditors, page one-forty-seven, forty-eight. Part everybody wants to know is the stuff that, you know, we have findings on, because, oh, findings, that's what we wanna talk about. So we have a material weakness. This is the one we have every single year for the last twenty years. Material amounts, receivables, payables, capital assets, additions not recorded in the financial statements, adjustments were made, et cetera, et cetera. That's why we have orders.
Which page are you on?
I'm on one-hundred-and-fifty.
One-hundred-and-fifty, okay.
One-fifty, that's where it all starts, where everybody wants to jump to and look at it, so. We have this finding every year. Ninety-five percent of the audits they do, according to Chad, have this finding. The ones that don't are lucky, they're not good. It's just, if there's any changes or any kind of transfers, anything they have us do, you have this finding. Well, if we didn't have the finding, we wouldn't need the auditors, because then we'd be perfectly doing it every year. So that's kinda what it comes to, it's the gist of what it is. If he was here, that's what he would tell you. That's what he told me, so. Ninety-five percent of them do not see that. The other one that we had is, and this is a fun one, Val and I had to scratch our head for a long time. She didn't scratch so much hair off as I did. I scratched for a lot longer. We are over on our debt service, which I don't even know how that's possible, because we set our levy based on the debt we need, our estimates are very conservative on the interest. And then we come to find out, one of the Gatsby says that we have to pay for our leases from debt service. Why can't we, we borrow money to pay for leases? So how am I supposed to do that? And that was a conversation we had, Chad, and so they're in a whole different place when they talk about these things. There's the bond attorney side that we talked earlier, central corporate, et cetera, other things we can borrow for. These are not some of those things. So before the end of the year, we have to get our leases figured out, and we have to make an entry, put it on the books that we like we paid it out of there, even when we didn't, and then we're okay, we don't have that finding. That's what it comes down to. It is truly just an accounting finding, accounting transfer.
Okay, say that again.
It is on page one fifty-one.
Okay.
The spurs missed during the year, and the June thirty exceeded their budget in the debt service. Well, it really didn't until they put a finding in there to pay for our leases, which you now have to do according to the new GASB.
This is the certified budget, the four A twenty-four.
So we have to pay for leases out of the?
Debt service.
Debt service, but you can't borrow money to pay leases.
I don't think I can even technically pay for them out of debt service, because I can only pay for out of debt service things I believe we borrow for. So we're literally chasing our tail, talking to them, and finally it came out that we just need to make an entry on the books, not even our real books, but the accounting books, to show it was there, and then we don't have this finding. That's what GASB does. I don't know who thought of this, but that's what it is. Is that a fair statement, Val? Yeah, it's, it was just a conversation. You just sit there and, oh, okay, fine. June twenty-ninth, we'll put an account in here, this is how much the lease was, and we're golden. There you go. That's GASB ninety-something, I don't even know, eighty-seven, I lose track of them, so. There's probably an accountant out there who can explain it to you better than I can. Past that, that's kinda what you're saying, the finding for us from last year, it's the same one we have this year, like I said. We will make sure that we have leases covered. The other items that are coming, because we always wanna talk about the GASBs, so GASB one hundred was put in here, and that's the thing, wasn't that many years ago, you had a huge undertaking audits, and it was a terrible, horrible thing to go through, it's GASB thirty-four. Now we're at GASB one hundred. That's how far this has come over the years, of things that continue to hit us. GASB one hundred and one will be next year. So we'll get that figured out, and that is gonna change how we accrue compensation and accrue vacation, and then how we calculate and record that. So who knows what that's gonna look like next year? That is what we have to do for that. This year, it was GASB one hundred, which changes how the report looks for funds of major and non-major. So TIF and the WPC improvements were major funds last year, but they aren't this year now, so they're in a whole different section of the audit. That was GASB one hundred. I have no idea why. They don't explain that to us, they just make sure we comply with it. So you see a big negative and a big positive where it didn't used to be, and that's why. GASB one hundred, so. There, that's the quickest I can get through it. Happy to talk about anything else you want to. Feel free to read up and bring all the questions you want. We'll get through them, or you can get your chat's phone number, you can talk to him, because I get what I get, that's all I got on here. It's a hundred and fifty pages of wonder.
I'm pretty sure if I called them up, we'd be, soon we'd be charged by the hour.
I would not be surprised.
What would we pay for this?
We running how much, Val? Eighty, about eighty thousand?
For this?
And we don't have a choice. We legally have to have one every year, and the last time we bid it, they were the only bidders, so you're getting less and less audit firms wanting to do governmental auditing, and so you take what you take. It's not uncommon for there to be a single bidder, and that's the end of it, you don't have a choice, so. We'll be bidding it out again here in the spring, and I guess it could be another twenty thousand probably on top of that. That's what we're anticipating.
I would assume that, that bidders on bonds, when they issue bonds, take a look at this audit.
Absolutely.
Obviously that they look in the detail.
Absolutely, they do. And that's part of why we do what we do, that's part of why we do this annual comprehensive financial report, not just a straight cash audit. Simpler, doesn't cost us any less, because the hours are still there to do it, but this is much more detailed and comprehensive, and I think it provides a better picture, comparable across the state, not the country, that other audits may not do, so that is why we continue to do this.
And that's one of the reasons why they have the standards also, is because they want everyone's reporting to be done in exactly the same format, reporting exactly the same numbers, in exactly the same situation, so the bond bidders are looking at something, they'll know what exactly they're looking at and be able to make their determinations from that. I agree, this stuff, you know, we, we deal with stuff all the time with the Department of Labor and the IRS, it's like, who on earth came up with this stupid idea? But it probably has a reason for it.
Sure.
But it, it is frustrating and costly, and I'm just glad that there are people like you and Val that understand this and can work with it and put it all together.
Well, I'm grateful for Val, because I think I'd go crazy doing this anymore. I did it for eleven years, I don't wanna do it anymore. Val gets a choice in doing it, but it's, it's just a lot, and I agree, it's complicated, it's hard to understand why. A lot of it makes no sense, there's no common sense to some of it, but that isn't always what's considered. It's no different than some of the Iowa code, we have to read and interpret the way we do things. We do such as I can borrow for our existing park, I can't borrow for a new park. Why? I, I mean, it's just things like that that don't make any sense, and there's chapters that don't make any sense. So we do what we do, this is what it is, and that's your, that's your audit.
Okay, I'm gonna ask a, I'm gonna ask an annoying question. On page one forty-three, it's got a list of all, say, three things like, you know, we've got one police station for the last ten years, and one fire station for the last ten years.
Yep.
Swimming pools. At what point do we have zero swimming pools?
Well, since this fiscal twenty-four audit finished, I suppose we could put a zero in there, we just didn't wanna put salt in the wound, I guess, but.
Okay.
It's still there, it's just not open there.
Okay, that, that's what I was curious about, at what point it goes down to zero.
We didn't say it was a usable swimming pool, but I got it's still there.
Okay.
So they're counting assets at that point, that's something we provide just to get this.
As an asset, I suppose, just to resist as an asset, fair.
All righty, counsel, you have been presented with a printed copy and a summation of the audit. Are there any more questions or discussions?
Thank you. Thanks for all the help.
Thank you. Thank you, Val.
We'll move on to item H. You have in front of you seven different reports. Can, you'd be happy to entertain any questions or discussion on those. Staff updates. James?
We have none tonight, sir.
Okay. So counsel person Bergen.
After the city council meeting, I'm going to the poorhouse, and I'm going to have myself a cold beer. Anyone who'd like to discuss the city council business, please feel free to join me.
Thank you. Counselperson Jones. Counselperson Myers.
I just wanted to give a shout-out to the city crews who have been doing a stellar job of keeping our streets clear and safe the last few days. I can personally vouch that they were out at four o'clock this morning. Care of mine.
Thank you. Counselperson Kingas.
On that note, and just with the snow, we have, we had a decent snowfall, not a mega snowfall, but a decent snowfall. If you have fire hydrants, I know that's an area to, if you have a fire hydrant near your yard property, adopt a fire hydrant, kinda clear that out so that it's easier if it's needed to be accessed.
Thank you. Counselperson Drinko.
Well, you may have noticed that the guest counsel person sitting here at the dais tonight is not Seth Butler.[1545.82]